Okay Scott, we're recording and everyone's here.
All right, great. Good evening, everybody. I apologize for us being just a couple minutes late. We were waiting for a board member. We do have enough for a quorum, so we can go forward and and hopefully we get our last board member. So that's the reason for the delay. Before I get going here, I have to read something into the record to allow us to do this virtually. And it goes as follows. This meeting is being held virtually pursuant to New York State legislation S 50001 slash A 4001, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene meetings during the current pandemic via video conferencing and or telephone conferencing. New York legislation S 50001 slash A 4001 has been recently extended until March 14th of 2020. And I guess I'll say, oh, hello, Richard. I'll tell everybody that I don't know that this will be the last virtual meeting, but it might be, we might be going live. We'll stay tuned. You know, as the numbers go down, hopefully we'll go back to live, but right now we're still virtual and we're still authorized to do so. And with that, I welcome everybody to the town of Rhinebeck. Virtual zoning Board of Appeals meeting for February 16th, 2022. And did everybody have a chance to take a look at, this is the board members? Take a, have a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes for January 19th, 2022?
Yes.
Yes. Any questions, concerns or comments?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented for the meeting of January 19th, 2022. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
I?
I.
Opposed?
I.
Any abstentions? Okay. And just for the record, I'll do a roll call. We have Tim Allenbrook.
Here.
Catherine Clark.
Yes.
Richard.
Here.
And Tim Econopoli.
Present.
Present. All right. And I am present. We are all present. That's good. All right. The first matter that's on is the Daniels case. And is there somebody here? Let me guess, Donna Daniels?
Yes, and Robert is with me as well. Nice to meet you.
And nice to meet you too. And first, I just before we get going on, I did want to say that I appreciate the new application in the sense that you guys did augment what you gave to us previously with the renderings. And I appreciated that. So it was definitely, it's definitely a better application than the first time around. And those renderings are very useful. So I just wanted to say thank you on that. But with that said, and this could be me. I am still having some problems with the numbers. And I think Jim also, we're trying to figure out exactly what the square footage of, you know, the house is going to be, and there's different numbers or they've changed, or I'm not sure. So I want to, before we can accept this, I need to have rock solid concrete numbers. And I was hoping you guys can provide that. So that's my first comment.
Okay. Would you like me, can I address that when I, when we get to that or?
Well, can you just tell me right now how big the house is going to be? Because I mean, that's, that's the key thing. We need to know.
2,512 feet, 2,512 feet.
Okay. And is that, I mean, I didn't see that anywhere in the application. I could have missed it. So I'm not saying it's not there.
I think you might have missed it. First page. For our second page. Number three. We have the gross floor area is very close to the allowable. The principal structure has an area of 2,512 feet. This represents 9% overage of the 2,300 allowed.
Where is that in, on page three? I see though, it says floor area gross.
So page, actually it says page four in the application. But that's because the first two pages are instructions. I think it's the second page of, of the actual application at the bottom, item number three.
Ah. Okay. So that's, that's the square footage. All right.
Right. I appreciate that Jim is such an integral part of both boards. He was helpful and patient with our process recognizing some variances and preparing what ultimately is the same information we provide to the planning board, to the zoning board. So the renderings were requested by the zoning board and initially commented on. And you instructed me when we spoke last, to please come back with more information and to share with you everything that was given to the planning board that we've done.
Okay. And the 2,512 number, how does that impact any of the other variances that you need?
It does not. There's a limit on the accessory structure side.
Right. And that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, it's the accessory structure. Of course, you don't include the, the parking, the garage parking areas. But the, that comes up to like, I think it's listed somewhere. It was, it was requested that answer, that discussion came up in planning as well. And the answer is it's like 500 and something, but it falls below the allowable 25%.
Okay. And, and is that, and again, I apologize. I thought I had gone through this. We have a bunch of applications on. But is that also set forth in the application somewhere?
Yeah, it is not because it was not requested. The plans, however, are part of the application. So it could be, I guess I didn't feel the need to prove I didn't need a variance. I don't need a variance. So I didn't ask for one for the accessory structure. The one variance we are looking for, and you pointed out and said, hey, come back when you're ready, is the height of the accessory structure.
So part of this, you know, I'll, I'll take on responsibility for some of this, Robert, because we did discuss this at the planning board last week. And there were again, some questions about the overall numbers. And I don't think we've seen these numbers at the planning board. So this needs to be, you know, brought forward to them. But I just did the quick calculations and it does seem that based on what you're proposing, you meet, you meet the requirements for the, for 12569 C5, the RCO. So I think, I think, I think we're good on the numbers, Scott.
Yeah, the planning board, in an effort to appease the planning board and the neighbors, we reduced the program and the size of the house. We initially submitted an application to the planning board and suggested it was 3,000 feet.
Right.
In fact, we didn't worry about it being exactly, not thinking it was a problem, but we, the owners responded by willingly reducing the size of the accessory structure of the house. And we feel like we've done a pretty diligent job responding to the planning board.
Yeah, I think, I think the initial was about 3,050 or something. And, and, and it's great that in response to the neighbors, you, you made the adjustment and, and that's what's caused some of this confusion. So. But it's a good thing responding to the neighbors and trying to, you know, make everybody happy or as happy as they can be. So what the, the height on this is going to be what?
The height of the building, the height of the accessory structure.
Yes.
Is 20, 27 feet, four and three quarter inches. And that's really born, it's not a design. That's a result of actually minimizing the height. The door, there's a garage, it needs a certain minimum height to get a standard overhead door in. There's a certain minimum structure height for the floor. There's a certain height to walk up some stairs and open a standard sized door to access the second floor. And then there is the roof pitch, which we felt was stylistically, architecturally correct. We didn't want to make it look silly or flat. So it, I don't think it's beef. It's, it's quite reasonable. And in total, it comes up to a little over 27 feet.
And then, okay. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
And of course, the, the zoning regulations suggest where state shall be 20 feet. So therefore, it's a, it's a variance request.
Right. I just didn't see that number 27.
Oh, I should also note. 27 feet may sound tall. Four feet of the 27 feet are a result of us moving the garage back and south and, and closer to the property line in order to.
Oop, he's frozen.
I think he froze. I, I think he was saying, yeah, he's back. You froze for a second, Robert. I was going to fill in your sentence, but you go.
One of the 27 feet, four feet of that is the, is actually grade. The grade difference from the garage floor down to grade as a result of having to move the garage to satisfy the neighbors' visual impact or impact to view of the river. So we could have made it closer to 23 feet.
Right.
But we did that. I think the neighbor's happy with that, but I prefer the neighbor to tell you that.
Right. Well, they'll get a chance at the public hearing. And that, that's what that's for. The, the 27 foot, four and three quarters inch. Is that anywhere in? And again, this could be me again. I, I apologize. I went through a bunch of these, but I didn't see that. I mean, I knew that the variance was, I knew it was over 20 feet. I didn't know how much it was. And I was looking for that number because we have to be precise in what we're giving.
We're, we're, it is not there. The planning board requested it. We will add it to the rendering and provide it to both planning board and zone.
Okay. So we may have to just fiddle around with the application itself, which can be amended. You know, before the public hearing notice goes out, so we can, the public has to know exactly what the variance is for. And that's why we need to be precise. We're not just trying to be pains in the neck, but we need to tell them, you know, the extent of the variance. And I think it is important for you to note at the public hearing, the reason for, you know, the height being what it is. So it, because that's a compelling argument. All right. So I had that. And then Jim, did you have a concern about them potentially needing another variance of some sort?
Well, the, the fourth one was the, the size of the accessory structure, floors, the, the square footage, I should say, of the habitable space, which is, we, we just covered. So I believe we're just, we're at the three variances that have been requested in the application. So gross floor area for the principal structure, orientation of the garage being in front of the principal structure and the height of the accessory structure.
Okay. So we're just going to need, again, we can accept things and amend the, the application up until the time that the public notice goes out. So we're able to tell the public exactly what the variances are for. And that's why it was so important to get these numbers. So we need to have that done. Gretchen, when, when does the, a, a public notice go out on something like this? I know our, our next meeting is 316.
The proof of the mailing has to be in 10 days before. So everything has to be done at least 10 days before the public hearing.
Okay. So maybe in the next week or so, there can be an amendment so that this is cleaned up a little bit. So we know exactly what we're dealing with. Is that okay? Can you understand why we need that?
Yes, very reasonable. We will take care of that.
Okay.
Just, do we have any questions about the placement of the accessory dwelling or were those numbers very clear? Because is that going to be required for the second variant?
Well, it's, it's in the RCO. Yeah, it's in the RCO. So the numbers are, you know, that, that there, there's no real setbacks. It's, it's subject to what's kind of in the neighborhood.
It's just that it's in front.
Right. And if everyone wants, I could put the renderings up that Robert, you know, provided, just so you can see the visual. We do have those. So whatever you'd like to do. But yes, it's, it's just the fact that it's in front of the principal structure.
Okay.
Based on the road location.
Yeah, you can throw them up if you like, just the ones that are, are probably the most important.
And if I could just add something to that. First of all, my husband apologizes. He couldn't be here. He had a work commitment. But if you, if you know the property, it actually has two addresses, 391 Rhine Cliff Road, which I think is the one you see in, you know, officially registered and eight slate dock. The town has requested, and we think it makes a lot of sense that we officially change it to eight slate dock because their, their very good point is if an emergency vehicle needed to find us, 391 Rhine Cliff Road isn't super helpful. If we had the 391 Rhine Cliff Road address, the garage would not be in front of the house. It would be next to it, you know, because it, it runs parallel to the road. But because we're now using slate dock, which goes this way rather than that way, it's technically in, in front.
Okay.
Further complicating that, just to add to it. It was a shared driveway with Henry Barron's. And secondly, our services still come across Henry Barron's property, electrical and water. So it's slightly complicated in that manner, but I think Henry's happy to have his own driveway. And the Daniels are happy to have their own driveway and the Duchess County emergency response units now have a proper and correct eight slate dock grid address.
Yeah. And, and I think that's an important fact to know about the property. So if, again, if that can be included in some fashion to the more background we have, the better able, we're able to understand why you need what you need and why it makes sense. So.
Thank you.
So that shows the, the garage and the the upstairs accessory unit. And then there's another one, I think it's, is it two? Let me see.
Next.
Yeah.
Right. The, the planning board requested really just that first rendering, but we really thought quite logically. They will beg to see more. So we said, let's just preemptively show them the house. We minimized the number of windows looking at or shedding light at what you see in the foreground, which is four Slate Dock Road owned by David Barron's. And so you see the, the east side of our proposed house. And the next picture actually shows you kind of an overlay of what's there now.
Right.
It's our, our, it's our proposal that the new house actually be not as tall as the one that's there now.
Right. And just to get back to moving the garage, Robert. Looking at this rendering here, was the original plan to have the garage closer to the middle or closer to that tree that's in the middle of the? And then you moved it over to the left?
Well, we really moved it, we moved it away from the large maple tree for two reasons. One, we care about the maple tree. We pledged to keep it. The, the neighbors like it, the Daniels like it. So we wanted to stay away from the, the, the roots of the tree. And two, we, we stayed, we moved it and backed it east actually to, because as we move closer to the house, we need to keep access to the garage and the house. So it becomes, you can't push two buildings together so easily without adjusting them. And you can see that in the sight plan.
And, and, and so by moving that, the, the way you did, obviously that opened up the view for the, some of the neighbors.
It's better, it improves it. Yes.
Okay. All right. And then I saw you, you had a river view, which was nice.
This is, that's real, oh, we have, that's, this is a view for what would really be a, a boater, a boating party that decides to venture pretty close to shore. Like this is really only 100 yards offshore. The water's pretty shallow there. It's not a, it's not an impact to the main shipping lane or, or to people across the river. And I think they included one more from the middle of the river.
You did.
And, and we, we rendered the proposed building appropriately. I'll call it brown. They kind of disappear. I mean, they disappear in the winter because we're all so fond of brown in the wintertime. And in the summertime, there, there are actually plenty of trees that hide a lot of that hillside.
Okay. While you've answered the, the questions I needed to have answered, and that was, you know, really the, the numbers and
Thank you.
Having, having the concrete numbers. And I do appreciate the, the the renderings you supplied to us. I'm going to open it up to my board members. I've talked enough. Do you guys have some questions, concerns? Jim, as well?
I do have a question. So there were four variances requested and we dropped one?
No.
Is that right? Now we're down to three?
There was a suggestion. Yeah. There was a suggestion that we might need a fourth, but it's not true.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're just at the three.
Just at the three.
Okay. And, and again, my question, because the numbers had changed a bit, you know, throughout the process was just getting concrete numbers. So we know what we're dealing with. And we've got that.
I'm good.
I'm, I'm okay.
Okay. Tim, Richard, any questions, concerns?
I have one question. Am I unmute still? No.
No.
Somewhere in here. Under number three, please describe whether the requested area variance is substantial. And the, and, and, and the second one down, you say considerations being given to the neighbor at four slate dock. But what were the considerations being given to David Barron's?
Well, let's see, that could mean both neighbors, but, but I think we've been focused on David mostly. The, let's see, section A3, orientation of the site, the history of the past shared, let's back up, A3 was having a, a, having a garage in the front yard. I would say another logical place is to move it north of the maple tree. There's plenty of room there, but it, it, it very directly impacts his true proper view of the river, which is looking straight northwest from, from his deck and his, his first floor. Really, the view we've rendered is not a primary view for the Barron's. That picture is taken from a bathroom window on the second floor. Where you don't really, it's a tiny window and you don't really spend any time there. Their real view is from their rear deck. And it looks not at the garage, but to the right of the maple tree. Which the Daniels could choose to develop, but, but decided early on, like, that would be really offensive. It's right in their view. And number two, it's further away from the house. So they prefer the car close, the cars parked close to the house.
So, so was that their suggestion to move it slightly south?
Not, well, that's a big move. That alternate location is, is 80 feet. You know, maybe 100 feet to the north. I don't think we ever decided it was a reasonable enough or smart enough idea to even put it on a plan or render it. So we made that decision early.
You know, it, it actually looks like it's covering the Costco oil tanks across the river from their main.
And that's a plus.
No charge for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did meet with the Barron's and watched them through the, through the plans and sort of told them why we had picked where we had picked versus others. And while they still had concerns about their second floor, they, you know, they were in agreement that between those two sites, that's the better site. They just necessarily weren't going to accept that, you know, they loved it and, and would, you know, happily agree. But, you know, to, it, it just didn't make sense to do that. And then as we've planned and we've changed the size a little bit, we've been able to move it over and back to, you know, to hopefully have a compromise. We're either, we're both happy or we're both unhappy a little bit.
That's a good settlement. The I mean, the idea, the, the Barron's would be most happy if there were no accessory structure at all. But I would note, they have an accessory structure themselves in the front yard. It's a storage unit halfway up their driveway. And to our south, Henry Barron's has a, a two car garage in his front yard close to the road. So it's not uncommon. And I feel like while we are in the Rhine Cliff overlay district, we're not really in the hamlet. We're eight properties north of the hamlet. And it, it is more suitable and reasonable. So I feel like the, the restriction would be much more severe if we were in the hamlet.
A quick question. There, there was a reference made to the existing structure and the, the new principal residence and the principal, new principal residence being actually reduced in height. Is that accurate? And if so, how much is it significant? Do you have an idea of what it is?
I didn't calculate it. Based on the renderings, we think it's a couple feet. So I'll put, I'll add those numbers to the plan I send back to you and the planning board.
Helpful to know. And, and, and also, you know, as far as the application goes in the public hearing, you know, having the run, if the Barron's want to be involved. You know, they're going to be notified of, of this situation, but having their input is always helpful too, since they're the ones who are most affected. All right. Any other questions, concerns?
What?
Comments? Richard?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
You sure? Okay. All right. Jim, are you secure with the numbers? I, I mean, I'm comfortable with the numbers, the representations have been made and.
Based on the discussion in the paperwork. Yes, I think we're good. We'll make sure to translate that over to the planning board. So everyone's on the same page.
Right. And, and obviously the application to us will be amended to, you know, put in those numbers. And so we know exactly what we're dealing with. And, and you have a little bit of time to do that. So I'll make a motion that we accept the application subject to the amendment to the numbers that we spoke about. And do I have, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I think that was Tim Allenbrook. All right. All in favor? I?
I.
Any, any opposed? No abstentions. Okay. For the record, all five board members were in the affirmative on that. Okay. So we've accepted the application. We do, we're going to need some more information. And the more information you can provide us, the better. The, if you have any questions on what your timeframes are, talk to Gretchen about when you have to have that done, but the sooner the better. The next public hearing is going to be on March 16th. Are you available?
Yes.
Okay. And your neighbors will be advised as to what's going on here, although it sounds like you've already spoken with them and that's great. And they'll have the opportunity to ask questions of you and you'll present again and all that kind of stuff. So I, I know, Robert, you've been through this before. So it's the same thing, just for the public. So anyway, we've accepted it. So we'll see you on the 16th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have some house keeping to do on this. Let's see. Jim, it looks like the, the planning board has already found this to be a type two action under seeker under 617, 5C17. Is that accurate?
Yes, they have.
Okay. So, so we'll adopt that. I don't, I don't. I don't think we need a motion for that, but we, we'll, we'll adopt their findings. And we need to do certain referrals. Obviously, the Rhinebeck Planning Board and the WAC. So we'll do that. Gretchen? And who would like to be assigned to this resolution? Catherine?
I haven't done one in a while.
Great. So Catherine's on it. All right. Am I missing anything, Jim?
I think that checks all by, the boxes I have as planner.
Okay, good. I'm glad we got that. That, that taken care of. Okay. So the next case is the Doherty matter. Is there anybody here for Doherty? Okay, you're muted. You're still muted. There you go.
All right. Sorry, it's not my PC.
How are you?
All right, how are you?
Okay. The, what we're doing here, I don't know if you've been through the, are you Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Doherty. Welcome. What we're doing here is just looking at your application to see if it's sufficient so that we can accept it. And then a public hearing can be scheduled, which will be March 16th. So if you could just briefly tell us, I, I already looked at it and it's a pretty simple application. But if you could just briefly tell us what the situation is here.
Oh, well, I had. Well, I had, well, we bought the place and it was in dire need of renovation. So I got a building permit and took a couple of years because it was downstairs and upstairs. And so I needed something for the front. We're, we're going to sell. We need to. And there, there was no porch on the front of it. It was just a step. You can see on one of the, so. So I I wanted to get, go with the easiest way to rectify the situation and I, and I decided on a pergola. And so I was, I don't know if I was misinformed by a contractor from the line that if you put up a pergola, you, you won't need any kind of variance or anything like that because it's not attached to the house. But we came to find out that we actually did. Because it's a hundred feet from the road. My house, you know.
Yeah, the requirement is a hundred feet.
Right. Yeah, I did.
And you need a variance of sixty-three feet because the pergola is going to be, you know, thirty-seven feet from the roadway. The house itself, as I understand it, is about fifty feet.
Yeah.
In the roadway.
Fifty-two essentially.
Okay. When was the pergola put up?
When this, this fall.
Okay. And who put it up for you?
My wife and I put it together. It's from, it's a, a plan from
Okay.
Simpson Strong-Tai. It's the outdoor accents. And they, they.
Was there, and, and I know this may sound like a bizarre question, but I just was looking at some of the pictures and things like that. Was there? Oh, I guess they're still there. It looks like the, the two, there, there were two big trees in front. They're still there. They were not removed in order to put that in place.
They're, they're quite a ways away.
Okay. All right. And the bottom line is you want to sell. And as a result of the process of selling the house, you found out that you had an outstanding violation. And that needs to be cleaned up in order for the sale to go forward.
I think so, yeah. I was informed that if I were to talk to the new, the buyer, that they could take over it, but I don't want to leave that, you know, to someone else. It was my screw up. So, you know, I figured I'd take care of it.
Okay. I, I did note that I know the house is under contract of sale and you want a closing date of sometime in February, but our process is actually reasonably quick, but it's not that quick. So the, the process, the way it works is we, we accept the application tonight and I think we can, but I'll let my board members speak to that. That, that's my gut reaction. Then there's a public hearing, which would be scheduled for March sixteenth. And then after that, we have sixty-two days to do a resolution, but we do it by the next meeting. So reasonably, you could have a resolution on this by the middle of April. Is kind of the timeframe. That's, and that's standard. That's, that's the standard operating procedure. And believe it or not, that's reasonably quick. So I just wanted to let you know what the process was and what the timeframes were and that kind of stuff.
Correct.
Okay. It, I've spoken enough. My board, board members, you guys have any questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but are there any renderings or distances or sizes or?
Yeah, there's, there's photographs that are attached.
It's in the ground.
Yeah. It, it exists.
Right, yeah. And, and then there's the plan for it that I bought from.
Right.
Simpson.
Do we have a rendering of that or?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, but it, but it's, it's actually in existence.
Twelve by twelve.
Yeah.
I, I had, I had twelve-foot lumber, so I just, you know, I didn't cut them.
Oh, it's, it's twelve by twelve. Okay.
Yeah.
Correct. It's a ten by twelve. And you were saying this doesn't attach to the house?
No, it doesn't. Yeah, and there's no roof.
Yeah.
But there's a concrete slab?
Yes.
So does the measurements for the variance, is that go from the concrete?
From, yes, right. I'm measuring the concrete. It's, it's right to the.
Yeah, the concrete would be the closest to the roadway, it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? Comments?
Yeah.
All right, this is.
This is not, this has not gone to the planning board and wouldn't. So it has not been classified by seeker.
Right, yeah, we can do that. I, I'll, I'll take care of that. It may be after the, the motion I'm about to make. It's a pretty simply application, I, you know. So not hearing any other comments, concerns or questions, I make a motion that we accept the application. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, that's Richard. All in favor? I?
I.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, for the record, all five members have voted in the affirmative. So we've accepted, Mr. Doherty, we've accepted the application. You'll be on the meeting for March sixteenth. At that point in time, your neighbors are going to be notified of, of this application for the variance. They'll have a chance to attend this meeting if they like and ask you questions. We'll ask you to kind of just go through the, the same procedure here, just explaining briefly what you need, what you want and, and why. And, and, and then after that, assuming we close the public hearing, we'll have sixty-two days, but we always, always have a resolution by the next meeting day. And, and that's probably the way this thing is going to go. So anyway, can you make it on the sixteenth? I should probably should have asked you that. Okay. So we'll see on the sixteenth, maybe live, but maybe virtually and and same procedure. So thank you very much for attending tonight.
Thank you.
All right. So Jim, as you suggested, there hasn't been a determination under seeker. And the suggestion is a, that is a type two action. And you said it's under six seventeen, five C seventeen. And I'll accept that. So I will make a motion that we deem the matter to be a type two action under seeker, section six seventeen, five C seventeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I?
I.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Scott, we have. Sorry, just change that, change that to C eleven from C seventeen. I apologize.
Okay. I used to have a cheat sheet with all the sections.
I haven't, what I mean, you said seventeen, it didn't sound right. So yes, it's C eleven. Same, same, same reference, just a different subsection.
This is off topic. Can you send me your cheat sheet? Because I used to have it. I don't know what the heck I did with it. So.
I can.
All right. Um, okay. And referrals to the planning board, obviously, and the CAB. So Gretchen, we need to, to get the referrals out. And would anybody like to undertake this application? Tim Allenbrook raised his hand first. Unless you really want it, Richard.
Well, I haven't done one and it seems pretty simple. And Catherine said she would help me with it. So I, but, but whoever, if Tim wants it, he can take.
No, I think for all the reasons you've stated, that this is a perfect one to get your feet wet on.
That's what I was thinking.
That's what you were saying. Well, you're a grizzled old veteran, Tim. So you get a harder one. So, Richard, you'll take this one?
Yes, thank you.
Great. All right, awesome. All right. So takes care of that. Anything else, Jim?
I'm all set.
All right. Next one we have is, and I, I apologize in advance if I mispronounced the name. Is it Tatacota?
It's Tataconda.
Tataconda?
Yes.
Let me put a C there. That'll help me. I'll do the phonetic. Great.
And my name's Wendy Wisburne. I'm the architect for Rebecca and Madhu Tataconda. So I'm here representing them.
Hi Wendy, how are you?
Hi, I'm good, thanks. How are you?
Very well. I don't think we've ever been before this board. So again.
No. Thank you.
So by the way, the materials are quite nice and we appreciate that. We don't always have that luxury. So thank you. Again, all we ask is that you kind of basically, I've already looked at it, but if you could just explain what you want to do and Jim, be ready to put up the, the renderings and, and site plan and all that kind of stuff.
Sure. So the Tatacondas have a thirty-eight plus acre property. And there's an existing residence and two sheds. And we're proposing to add a poolhouse, a detached garage, and to put a roof onto an existing utility pad. That's right. So the first variance is that the utility shed will be closer to the fronting road than the house. But the, the setback is actually, I can't read that number because my eyes are not that good, but I think it's two thousand, three hundred and forty feet from the road. And the shed is going to be thirty-eight feet closer and it's completely invisible. There we go. So yes, two thousand, three hundred and forty is the setback to the house. And then the shed will be thirty-eight feet closer to the road. So obviously quite a distance away. It's completely invisible to the road. And the only reason that the utility shed is going to be located there is because we're just adding a roof onto an existing utility pad, which already has a generator and the condensers. And so obviously the simplest thing is just to roof it in that location and not move it back.
Right. Yep.
And there's a photo of it now in its existing state. And they just decided they wanted it to be slightly better protected and not to see into it from their upstairs, which is why we're adding the roof.
Do you have a? Yeah, I saw that there were some rudimentary kind of showings of, of, of the roof and all that kind of stuff. Do you have a rendering of what it's actually going to look like?
The last page of that is just the little elevations.
Yeah.
So it's just super simple kind of timber structure with some slating on some sides.
Can you provide us with something that shows, you know, color and, and that kind of stuff? And maybe
Sure.
superimpose it upon what is actually there, just to give us a better idea. Yeah, kind of like the poolhouse, which was, you know, was great. And really showed it beautifully.
So the, the walls that go around this pad are going to remain the same. The only thing you're adding is the roof?
No, actually, there's going to be a door added. If you look at the drawing number three, proposed front elevation, there's going to be a full door there with full walls on some sides. There has to be some amount of opening, air opening. Um, so it's a blend. It's a blend of both.
Okay.
Open and closed. Yeah.
So if, if it could be, if we could get something closer to like, for example, what the poolhouse looks, looks like to show what this will look like, that'd be great.
Okay.
And, and the other thing, but, well, before I forget it, which I, I will if I don't say it now. Also a rendering of the garage. I know we're going to be placing it. But, but a rendering of what the garage is going to look like as well, because part of our test, as you know, is we have to, to see if it fits into the character of the neighborhood and blah, blah, blah. So we need.
No problem. Okay.
Okay. And so if you could keep taking, I apologize for interrupting.
No, that's okay. The second variance was for area of accessory structures and the maximum allowed is fifteen hundred square feet. And we will be exceeding that. The proposed area is forty-six hundred and sixty square feet, I believe, total for the accessory structures. But because the site is so large, we're still less than one percent building coverage. So we feel like it's not a substantial ask.
Is the pool actually there?
The pool is there, yes.
Okay.
There's a photo, if you go to the.
I thought, I thought it looked real. It, it didn't look like a.
Yes, I'm not that good.
Okay.
There it is. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Wendy, do you want to explain just where, where kind of the building will sit as we did in the pre-con meeting earlier? I think it helps with the perspective.
No problem. So if you see that there's a double, a pair of double gates sort of in the center of the photograph, that is the back edge of the pool fence as it exists now. That will be the front facade of the poolhouse. So the stone bench that you see and the cladded area to the, just to the right of that, that's the actual pool equipment that's housed right now, just on a pad. So that'll be completely relocated, actually underneath the poolhouse. So those things will go away and that will just be landscaping in front of the poolhouse between the pool and the poolhouse.
Okay.
So are those trees coming down?
No, there are a few trees coming down for sure. But as you can see, the site is very well treed. Most of this, most of the trees on the pool side, I think none of the trees on the pool side are being removed. And then on the back, there are a number of trees that are being removed. I think we're at ten. Right now, the landscape architect is working on a formal site plan for the submission to the planning board. And so we'll be able to nail down that number exactly after she's done working through the grading exercise.
Now, your measurements, are they from the poolhouse or are they from, it looks like you have a concrete?
There, yes. It's like, it's like a plinth that's around it. So that's where I've said the exterior of the building is, is that's the furthest extent. So it's that white, that white thing.
Yeah, okay.
And there's actually a little bit of building behind it. So that also is included in the numbers.
And I, I know I mentioned, do you have anything about the garage? What is, and I, I kind of know where it's going to be.
I only have the, the elevations there, which are, I think, further down in the document.
Yeah. And it's going to be around by the, where that stone wall area is.
That's right. So the existing stone wall, which you can see in that plan there on the, on the right-hand side. But there's also the photo, which is probably easier to see, which is.
Jumping around a little, sorry.
No, no, that's okay. So there it is. So that's the stone wall. This is a really distorted photograph, as you can see on the left. So if you, the height of the wall is quite accurate on the right-hand side, like by where that green truck is. So it's an existing pad. They're just going to, we're going to build within that wall. So we're not disturbing the wall or the grade behind it. It's just going to be slotted in to that stone wall area.
So just. I'm sorry. Catherine, you go.
So I just wanted to make sure I understood. You're going to be modifying the, the one structure with a roof and then you're, and then you're building a three-car garage. And then a separate structure, the third structure is the poolhouse.
That's right. And there's two existing sheds on the property already. And there was a question in our, in the pre-planning conference, the site plan does show that there's a treehouse and another little deck structure. But those we've confirmed have both been removed. So they don't exist. So I can pull them off of this topo map.
Or that, so that, will that change the numbers then for the total?
It doesn't. No, I hadn't accounted those. The deck wouldn't be one, but the treehouse, I didn't, I didn't even know it was there, honestly. It was eagle eyes on your board who spotted it.
It was a, it was an issue of the number of roof structures on the property, which would have been a planning board issue, not a ZBA issue.
Okay. And, and the square footage of both the garage and the house are in all this material?
That's right. Yes. That's right, yes.
Okay.
Alright, and, and I, just looking at the, um, the three-car garage, on, on the, the outside of it is, is, that's the stone wall.
That's right, that's the stone wall there, I mean technically, it's a, it is really a four-car garage, cause it's too eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, but it's quite low, I mean, it's not meant to be anything, there's some, on the, on the right hand, like the backside of the garage, there's some trees that have some pretty low limbs, so we were trying to keep the roof as low as possible at that side.
Okay. Alright, well, for the public hearing, if, if we could have, uh, well, before that, have the, the renderings on that, that'd be great.
Sure, no problem.
Scott?
Yeah.
Or Jim, is there, uh, when you're going for, uh, variances and permits in this, and is there a difference uh, in going for a poolhouse or, or a guesthouse?
I, I don't think there's any difference, it's just an accessory structure.
Okay, because I mean, this, I mean, I, uh, to me, uh, it's, uh, I've, I've just never have seen, uh, or seen a, a poolhouse to this extent, it looks like there's a couple of bathrooms and a couple of bedrooms and I, I just wasn't sure.
Well, if you hang around on this board for a while, you'll, you'll see other ones that are just.
Okay, good.
Extraordinary, like this one.
We actually are going for, um, um, a, with the planning board, a special use permit for, uh, secondary residents, I can't remember what exactly it's called, but, so we have admitted that this does, uh, look and smell like a house and actually is one, so.
You've confessed.
Yes, we've confessed before we were caught out.
But, yes, but it is a poolhouse.
Oh yes, it's definitely, it's just grown in scope quite a bit since the beginning of its design process.
Richard, it qualifies as an accessory dwelling, um, the definition was recently changed because there have been a lot of structures proposed in town that people were saying, well, it's an office, it's not a bedroom, even though it has a closet and a full kitchen and things like that, so the definition change and the planning board has been working diligently to make sure that if it looks like an accessory dwelling, we permit it that way, so there never is a question about it in the future. Um, doesn't make a big difference, it's, it's a, it's a technical issue, um, and there are a couple different accessory dwelling type uses out there, but in the end, they're all accessory dwellings or a non-dwelling accessory structure, they're really the two categories.
Thanks for the explanation.
This did bring up a, a separate question though, which I forgot to ask, does this require a new septic and well?
It, it doesn't require a new well, but it does require a new septic and we're in process with getting the BOH approval for a dedicated septic system for this building.
So you'll be using the water from the well that supplies the house?
That's right, there's, I think there's actually two wells on site.
Okay.
Yeah.
And are the, and they're marked on the map? On the survey?
They are, they should be. I will verify, yes, I'll verify that, but one of the wells is actually ending up underneath our poolhouse, um. So that well may need to go away, depending on, it has to do with where our septic system ends up being located, so, long story short.
So. The new septic system isn't, uh, set forth on the site plan?
It's not, because there's two possible locations based on requirements, this is like, there's tons of rock very, very close to ground all over the site and depending on, because the well is located so close to our building, we can only have this septic eject on the east side. Um, and if we have it eject on the west side, then we have to cap our well, because we're gonna be too close, so they're investigating both locations to see which is most viable.
Uh, the only other thing I was thinking of, uh, but, but, um, at, at some point in time, we're gonna obviously do a site inspection, so uh, we're gonna need to have the, um, poolhouse staked out, we obviously know where the utility uh, structure is, uh, and also, I, I, even though I know, we know generally, um, that the garage is gonna fit inside the uh, footprint of the, uh, the wall, uh, just kinda staking out the exact perimeter of the, um, it, it doesn't have to be anything elaborate, just to give an A, S, idea, like how far out is it gonna come from the, from the wall, you know, i- it's general size, and again, the same thing with the poolhouse.
Okay, when would that be in the process, just so I can make sure it's done in time?
Yeah, um, what I like to do, um, i- is, I like to do it after the, uh, public hearing.
Okay.
So I, so I can hear what the public has to say, if any, if there is any public and have that in my mind when I go out and do the site inspection, so I typically do it after the, um, you know, a- and I would probably go out after, um, you know, March sixteenth.
Okay.
So there's, there's time, it's not, it's not, and it'll be easier, there's snow, we'll be gone, whatever's left.
We have a contractor already, so he's around and able to assist.
Okay.
So, are we determining that this is an accessory structure or dwelling?
It's an accessory dwelling.
It's an accessory dwelling. So how, how we have it down in the application?
Uh, my understanding is that the dwelling aspect is only relevant to the planning portion of the approvals and that it was just the area of the accessory structures total here that mattered to the zoning board, so I didn't indicate that it was a um, accessory dwelling here, I just said accessory structure, but I could certainly modify that if it's relevant.
Yeah, it, it's always good to modify, uh, just to give us more information, well, a lot of times we like to have nearly the same information that the planning board has. Uh, because we have the five factor issue again that I, I, I mentioned, and that can uh, enter into, you know, does it fit in with the neighborhood, and I know we're talking about a thirty-eight, uh, acre parcel, but in other matters, it can factor in.
Okay, no problem.
And this, this four, six, six, zero square feet is all of the accessory structures, right?
That's correct, yes, all of them together.
Everything.
On this.
In, in the past, it's, it's been very helpful to us, and maybe you already did it, I didn't have a chance to look through everything in detail. People have had a little table that says, you know, here's the garage, this is the square footage, here's the poolhouse.
There is a table on that site plan that had the colored roof planch, um, like the zone zoomed in site plan to the right in red, there's a little table.
Great.
Oh yeah.
Yep, right there.
There it is, okay, great.
Any other, um, questions, uh, concerns?
Not, not comments.
Okay, um, yeah, I think we have, uh, enough certainly to accept the, uh, application, we, we do need the, you know, the renderings, the other things that I've uh, requested, uh, which can obviously be supplied, uh, before the public hearing, so, um, subject to receiving all that, I, uh, make a motion that we accept the application, do I have a second? Okay, um, Tim or Catherine, uh, one of you two, uh, seconded and, um, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstained? For the record, all five, uh, board members have, uh, voted in the affirmative. Um, so, Wendy, we're, we're gonna, uh, have you on for the sixteenth of March, is that a date that you can make?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, again, we're gonna need all those things, um, and, um, the neighbors, uh, such as they are uh, will be notified, uh, of, of this and, um, uh, we'll go through the same process. Uh, you'll just explain briefly, uh, what, 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 what's going on here. And, uh, if there's any public that'll ask you questions and, uh, maybe you have some comments, concerns, whatever, so, uh, same process.
Should I submit the material electronically and drop off the eight copies, or do you just want it electronically?
Uh, that is a, that is a, um, question for Gretchen, Gretchen, your preference?
Electronics, great, I would say at least one, um, hard copy for the file, and that way, if anybody does wanna come look at it, they can.
No problem, thank you.
Alright, great, we'll see you on the sixteenth.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let's see. Uh, the next, um, order of business on this, uh, application is to, um, uh, determine what it is under seeker, which it is a type two. Um, again, it's, uh, Jim, you said six seventeen, five C seventeen?
It, it, it is seventeen, Scott, and actually the last one was as well, I, my, my cheat sheet failed me on the last one, so we're, we're seventeen on all of these.
We're seventeen on all of these, okay.
Yes.
Alright, correct that cheat sheet before you send it.
I'm gonna correct it before I send it to you, exactly.
Thank you, alright, you can actually send it to everybody, uh, it's always good.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody should have a copy of it, it, it's, it's really very useful.
I can do that, absolutely.
So, that's, that's awesome, alright, um, so, um, alright, so I make a motion that we, um, classify this, um, application as a type-two action under seeker, under section six seventeen, five, uh, five, C seventeen, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, and all in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Abstained, alright. Um, referrals, uh, looks like to the, obviously the planning board and the CAB, so, um, Gretchen, if you could take care of that. And then we have, Tim, do you wanna take this one, or I can take it, doesn't matter?
I'll take it.
Okay. I will take this one. Alrighty. So that takes care of that. And then next, uh, we have Mr. Graminsky.
Good evening, everyone.
And this is the Heinz matter.
That's correct.
Alright, um, you're no rookie, take us through it.
Okay, so I'm here, uh, also with Seth Stickel from my office, and we are representing, um, Christopher and Laura Heinz, uh, they own, uh, property that abuts both, uh, no, it's at the intersection of uh, Mill Road and Morton Road, uh, the total parcel size is, uh, thirty-seven point seven acres. Okay, thank you, Jim. And, um, uh, this application is a, uh, is a result of, um, you know, uh, an application that has been, uh, that started with the, uh, planning board back in August of, uh, two thousand twenty-one. And, uh, we moved, you know, uh, in the, um, application with the planning board was, uh, for some, you know, landscaping changes, uh, to the property, uh, realignment of, uh, access, uh, to the main residence. Um, you know, currently, uh, if you see on the site plan, there, the driveway is off of Mill Road and then it enters and heads to the west, and then there's a loop, um, in there, and, uh, on the, right at the bottom of that loop is where the existing residence is, and then to the west of that is an existing. And so part of the, part of the application with the planning board was a, a new driveway, which is going to, um, eliminate that shaded section that Jim's showing, um, uh, to Mill Road, and it's gonna extend out to Morton Road. Um, uh.
That, that's been approved, Mark?
Yes, it has, uh, that's, that has been approved, uh, the majority of the, uh, uh, site changes and landscaping improvements have been approved by the planning board. Um, and, and once you get, you, the, it was, uh, driveway alignment, uh, uh, removal and addition of, um, some plantings, uh, trees and, and shrubs on the property. And, um, it also included, uh, the application also included, um, modifications to that barn located on the, uh, west side of the property. And so we'll get into, uh, you know, get into some details with that, um, and so those, the, the modifications to the barn were both, um, interior, internal to the barn, and also exterior. And so, um, uh, the Heinz's have been working with the planning board, uh, you know, to, uh, cause it's, it's a, uh, I should note that it's stor, it's a historic barn. And, um, and also, um, you know, as part of the, um, you know, application with the, with the planning board, we've looked at, we've looked at all the, you know, environmental aspects, uh, of the property, we've done, uh, archaeological investigation on, on all, on, on sections of the property where, uh, improvements and disturbances are, um, are proposed. And, um, also have been, um, you know, in touch with, uh, the neighbor to the west, which is, uh, which is, which is Wilderstein, and so, um, so just a little, and so, so what this application is um, to, to the zoning board of appeals is for and a gra, a garage addition, uh, which will be, which is to, to be, where Jim's circling there, is located near the northeast corner of the existing barn, and that garage addition is a result of, um, you know, discussions and um, you're working through, um, you know, uh, working through issues that, uh, you know, and, and discussions and suggestions of the planning board, cause originally the garage was being proposed on the north end of that existing barn. And so, um, you know, the decision was made to keep the integrity of the barn and, um, since there's no, there's no garage on the property, um, Chris and Laura that, you know, have, uh, have proposed this, this garage near, near the northeast corner. There's a, and, and we'll get it, we'll get into the, uh, um, you know, the deep, the architectural drawings and renderings in a minute, but there's also a, a breezeway connection, um, to that barn. And so, i- in doing this, um, you know, two things are required, uh, back to the planning board for a site plan amendment, uh, cause now we're adding, you know, th- this garage wasn't anticipated, uh, you know, on the, with the initial application, and so, um, um, you know, uh, uh, amendment of the site plan for that and Heinz's, Chris and Laura have also decided to do a few more landscaping changes. Uh, so that's include, that's, that's, you know, in, included to a, a submit, a, a resubmission that's been made to the planning board for the site plan amendment. And then, uh, also, uh, you know, du- due to the location of the barn, um, it's, it's actually, since this is a double frontage lot, it has frontage on both Mill and Morton Road. Um, the garage is an accessory structure, so it's now closer to the, uh, it's closer to the front, front yard than the principal residence, um, what, you know, exactly what we're gonna do on the, our next public, you know, our next application for T-Cord, it's the same thing. Um, uh, in this case, I, al- also, the, the plan doesn't show it, but, um, the, uh, the aggregate area of all the accessory structures, you know, is less than, uh, and the required amounts and s- since this is an HP twenty district, uh, total floor area is based on acreage, three hundred square feet per acre, and we are below that, so the, uh, the only required, uh, area variance that we're requesting from this board is for the, uh, uh, accessory structure, the new, the new garage and breezeway to be located in the front yard uh, of the principal residence. And, um, certainly, uh, open to any, you know, questions that, uh, the board may have.
Yeah, uh, Jim, maybe, there you go, that's what I was gonna ask for. Uh, does, does, uh, the, uh, structure to the left look like that right now, is that?
It, it does, uh, yeah, so there's, well, there's, uh, um, some, uh, so that, yes, it does. On, on the left, that, that elevation is correct. Um, and so that's, that's how the, the existing barn looks on the, it would be the east side and the south side of the barn. Right, and that, that, uh, yeah, on that lower, on that lower rendering. Obviously, everything to the, uh, to, to the right side or to the east is the, you can see the breezeway connection in the.
Yep. The, um, the structure to the left, i- i- is there dwelling space, there living spaces, is it, or is it?
Yeah, yes, there is, so there's, it's both, there's, you know, on, on the, uh, on the lower level, um, there's, it's just, you know, open space for, uh, you know, right now, Chris and Laura are using it for, you know, entertainment, they're, uh, also it, you know, in part of the, uh, um, you know, the reconstruction of that space it is, you know, uh, you know, they, they, you know, plan for, you know, a gym and, you know, some other amenities in there. Um, and then, that, and so that's located on the lower level, on the second level of that wing, on the south wing, uh, there is, uh, living space up there, there's a kitchen and, um, uh, there's a kitchen and a bathroom. Actually, the bathrooms and, uh, are, are in the, are in the lower level, so these all, uh, preexisted. you know, prior to the Heinz's purchasing the property. And all, you know, building and CO issues have been remedied with the town around the building apartment.
The the structure that's proposed, any dwelling space on the top there? I don't know that it can accommodate that, but I just figured I'd ask.
No dwelling space at all, just just storage. That's it. Some building elevations. I think we have some more renderings if you could just go through those quickly. Right? So this is you know, obviously looking, standing north and looking south. And so you can see the garage and breezeway on the left side of that drawing. And then on the right side, that's the that's the existing, the existing barn. And where those small windows are, it was actually a stable that was located there. And that's that's one of the things that Chris and Laura had been working with the planning board and also Haypack on, you know, preservation of that stable area. Could push, slide down one more, Jim. This gives you another perspective, you know, from the north. And so once again, you can see the garage and breezeway in the stable area. But now what's shown on the on the right side, which is the westerly elevation, that is that that a portion of that, like, for example, the deck, there used to be a former deck, but now what's being shown is reconstruction of that deck. And then, you know, a doorway and some windows located on that west elevation of the barn. And so the the deck has been approved and there's been modifications to to that west elevation with with the windows that are still being discussed and developed with the planning board and, you know, part of the the amended site plan application. And now this gives you, you know, a full picture of what the west elevation looks like. The only thing, once again, the difference is the is the doors that will open up to the to the deck on both sides and then a window in between. The wing on the right hand side, that remains the same. Just another rendering of the garage. And here are some you know, architectural elevations. Once again, you know, very similar to what we were just looking at with the renderings for that top one, that's the that's that west elevation. Same here, they, you know, the barn and the stable re- remain, they basically remain the same. Actually, that one elevation where Jim's sketching on right now, you can see there's some skylights that have been added in the roof just to bring some light into the into the structure, into the barn structure itself. I think that's it for our drawings.
Again, nice application as usual. I don't have any questions, but I leave it to my board members as to their any questions, concerns, comments.
Yeah, one question. So the deck on the back. You said that was all approved. Bone across.
Yeah, the deck, so there, so prior to our application, there there was a deck on the back. It's been, the deck that's being proposed is approximately, I think it's actually maybe two feet wider to the west side, but there, yes, it is. That was part of the initial application and the deck has been approved by the planning board.
You know, the other thing, this is, this became the front of the house because the change of the driveway. How you entered?
No, no, that so that the, you know, the house is is located to the east of the structure. So so what's your question? Could you?
Well, the you said the plan board told you to not to come off Mill Road with your driveway?
No, it was, it was Chris and Laura Heinz's decision to.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So that was the planning board. So you changed it. So now that becomes the barn or the structure you're building now becomes the front.
Well, actually, even though that we're going to change access and that and that shaded section is going to be eliminated, it's it's still a double frontage lot. So even if we yeah, it's the fact that we're even in the driveway doesn't affect it. It's 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 the fact that you still have a double double frontage lot. So you you need to adhere to the requirements of the zoning code. Is that, is that, am I correct in that, Jim?
Yeah, it's a corner lot, so it has two front yards.
Right.
Yep.
Any other questions, concerns, comments on the application?
Not for me.
Okay. All right. Again, a nice job on the the application as usual, Mark. I, at this time, I'd make a motion that we accept the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that's Catherine. All in favor? I? I? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, for the record, all five members have voted in the affirmative. So Mark, we'll see you here on March sixteenth. Is that a date you can make?
Actually, Scott, I I'm going to be out of town, but Seth will be will present in my absence.
Great. Okay, so we'll see you, we'll see you then.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, is the the, at some point in time, again, as usual, we'll need the staking and all that kind of stuff, just to give us an idea of
Yes, yes.
Where the thing's gonna be. I mean, I have an idea, but.
The barn is actually, or the garage is actually staked right now.
Okay.
Right.
Great. Thank you. All right, again, let's see, the usual housekeeping. We have to classify this under seeker. Jim, you said your recommendation is what's a type two, but six seventeen five Cs.
Yeah, and so this one was determined as a type two by the planning board previously. They did accept, have accepted that application. They're not coming in for an amended site plan, so I'm not sure how you want to handle that, Scott.
The recommendation of the planning board.
Their previous one.
Yeah. I mean, I it's not going to change it any. I mean, I know they're making some some minor changes here and there according to Mark, so it's not going to change the nature of it. It's still going to be a type two under the same section.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we'll just, we'll adopt the planning boards. Categorization of it under seeker. And then we have referrals, Town of Brian Bay Planning Board, and then the CAB. And then we're not going to do the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District, District, right?
That was Haypack, and no, we're not going to do that.
Okay, so we'll take that out.
Yep, so just CABWAC in the planning board.
All right. Mr. Allenbrook, do you think you're up for this one?
My memory is pretty, pretty sluggish. I like the simple ones.
Okay. Tim?
As an econopoly? No, I've got one going now that.
You go? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, yeah, what the heck, I'll take it.
I can, I can do another one.
Are you sure? Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Catherine.
Sure.
You people are all retired. I'm not, so.
I know.
Except for Richard. I'm waiting for lessons. I want to learn.
You'd be surprised how these weeks can just fly by.
Yes, I've heard that and how you can't believe that you actually had time to work, given how active you are in retirement. I've heard it all.
It's an old story.
Yes, it makes me more jealous by the second. Okay, and Mark, I think you're up on the the public hearing. This is T Court. So I know you did a very exhaustive and thorough review of the of the application. We don't need that tonight, I don't think. Is there anybody here from the public who is interested in this application? Okay.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it. So I I just I'd ask for more in depth if there was, but since there isn't, just give us the Cliff Note version.
Mark Reminsky here, representing T T Court LLC. This is era, two area variants applications are being requested from the Town of Ryback Zoning Board of Appeals. And one is a height variance for an accessory structure. And that accessory structure is actually a treehouse. And so I won't go into the detail again of how we've how that, you know, I've worked with Michael Trimble, the zoning administrator, on classifying this as an accessory structure. And so the only variance required from this board is for its height. And then secondly, area variance applications being requested are sim- are exactly as I just presented on my previous project for the accessory structures which are being proposed on the on the T Court LLC property, which are in the front yard of the principal residence. And so those accessory structures, and I have them on those, you know, three rectangular boxes, starting on the lower left, there is a an addition that is being proposed to the guest house. And there's an attached mudroom and three bay garage. So that that's that's being proposed in the on the lower left rectangle. Upper right rectangle are structures that are associated with the train, miniature train application that's being and and actually, we had an initial meeting with the planning board regarding the initial train layout of the the train alignment and track only, not the the structures yet. But so this application to the ZDA is for is for those, is for those structures. And then and then finally, the structures, the final structure is there's a for service, service garage that's to be located. That that's that lower, lower right rectangle. There are, there there, there's an existing service garage. And now we're proposing a new service garage with some storage space. And so that is the, those are, those are the structures that are being we're asking this this board to consider for area variance for for them, for since they are located in the front yard of the principal residence.
Now, I know we haven't done a site inspection, and I I know we we wanted to do one. I talked to Jim about the potential. We're going to try to get one together potentially with the planning board.
Okay.
So we'll try to, you know, make it as painless as possible. It may have to be two separate, you know, visits, but we'll try to keep it to one if we can.
Okay.
I I don't have any questions, but I leave it to my board members if they have any questions, concerns, comments.
I thought there were some questions about the treehouse and the walkway, how that was going to be finished.
It's so that the the plan shows that there'll be a, there'll be a walkway, you know, walkway from grade to the, to the existing, the tree, the treehouse sits on a platform.
Yeah.
And so there'll be, there'll be a new, a new walkway that and it's shown in that, in that, in those lower elevations, those were to existing grade.
Okay, so the, okay, so that height is what the grade way you'll come out to grade.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. The single line is the grade, right, Mark?
That's correct.
Yeah, this is the grade right here, Tim. Okay, how long is that?
I think we determined that it's proximity of thirty to thirty five feet long.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
To add to it also, currently, there's just a set of stairs that goes down from the right, the front porch goes down, and then you have to walk upstairs again to get to the great of houses.
Then there was a question about the size of these trains. Looked awful big than what it was actually going to be.
In the illustration.
Yeah, it was in the illustration and we've actually corrected that. And the the, those images will be submitted again. It's just that the renderers weren't able to get it done in the two.
And and just to refresh my memory, Mark, there's no setback issues with any of these three buildings. It's just they all three need a variance for being in front of the principal residence.
That's correct, so.
Okay.
And just, just to note that, so I, especially with the the service garage, because the the existing garage, and so I had a very specific discussion with Michael Trimble about this, because because of the location and the step back for the existing service garage, you know, which is less than, you know, the required setback that governs. And so the new service garage is no closer, and those are, well, those are actually front yards there.
This is actually a flag lot and and this this section where the the building is going is part of the pole with the flag.
Part of, part of the flag lot. It's it's an odd configuration. So so I had a specific discussion with Michael Trimble about that. So no set, no setback area variances are required, since the existing structure is closer to those to those property lines than what we're, than the structure that we're proposing.
Oh, that's interesting.
That's not the first time I've had that decision rendered. I also have done something in the town of Myland. What was the same, it was, it was the same out. You know, if there's an existing structure, you know, at a certain distance, then as long as your proposed structure doesn't, isn't any closer to that step, to that property line, no, no area variances required.
So is the existing structure going to stay there or it's coming down and being replaced by the other one?
No, it's it's, it's, it will, it will remain.
Okay. That's a very interesting interpretation, but fine, if that's what it is.
I would say the the unusualness of the orientation of these buildings to each other is because the existing structure has a number of utilities that are in the area between the two structures. And we'd rather not rebuild those utilities by by orientating this building closer to to that other garage. So we had to put it further away and twist it a little bit to fit in the proper sort of entry to it.
So did we just reduce it down to two? Is that what we're saying?
No. We, well, it's always been two variances, Tim, because
I thought you said three.
No, it was just the height variance.
Okay.
Only for the treehouse and then for accessory structures in the front yard for the bound, the the remaining accessory structures on the property.
But but so on the, on the second one, on the closer to the front of the property than the main residence, is that one variance with three notations in it? Or is it three variances that they're all closer to the to the road?
I guess I looked at this board and its consultant on how to, I mean, we, I list, obviously, we we show all those the the request is for all those structures, whether they are whether it's their individual or I just look for the guidance from the consultant in this board.
Jim, do you have any guide? I mean.
I I haven't been doing this with you guys very long, so I would defer to whatever you've you've done in the past, as long as it's absolutely clear what we're doing. I think, you know, it's okay. The the variance is being requested of the
The the variance is being requested are the same. It's just a question, do you do one for all the structures or do you want to do one individual, I guess, for each structure being requested?
It's just a matter of form over substance. It's so I think it can be done either way. I haven't seen a similar situation, or at least I can't recall one, but I don't think it makes I don't make it makes a hell of a difference.
As as long as we list each of the buildings.
Correct. As long as we list and make it very clear that there are three buildings and 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 we're giving the variance to each of these buildings. So, Tim, you're the you're the one who's going to be putting this together. I leave it to you. If you want to break it up into three, that's fine.
No, that's that's okay. But now I'm confused again. We just said three buildings. I thought it was we were down to the height of the 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 treehouse and the other building.
It's two variances, Tim. So one, so one variance of the treehouse, we don't need the only variance for the treehouse is is a height variance.
Right.
Because it exceeds twenty feet. Then then I'll go through the accessory structure. So the first accessory structure is the the addition of the garage and the mudroom to the guest. So there's accessory structure number one, and then the tree building. There are two structures there. There's a it's a roundhouse car barn. I'm combining those into one structure. There's then there's the the station house, right? So now we have three and then the fourth accessory structure is the new service garage.
Right.
And it well, service garage and storage bins, those are combined.
Which doesn't need a variance, we're saying.
Yes, it does. It does. It it needs.
Michael trouble said you didn't need it.
No, you don't need a setback variance, but you need the air variance for yeah, for being in the front yard of the principal residence.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to make it crystal clear, you can break down each individual building and give each building a, you know, a separate same variance. It's in front of the principal structure.
Tim, I'm happy, Tim, I'm happy to summarize and send something to you if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I don't I don't remember anything exactly like this, not surprisingly.
No, I I know this property, it's been before us before over the years, but different owners, different issues. Anyway. Any other questions or concerns? Okay. Not hearing any, I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
And all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, for the record, all the board members have signaled in the affirmative. And as you know, Mark, we have sixty two days to get a resolution out there. We usually do it by the next meeting. I guess we'll have to see, we have to do the site visit. That's the one thing.
Okay.
So that may, we may. And and again, I don't know if 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 because of circumstances we have to go beyond the next meeting. Is that a problem or or not? And if if we do, I don't know if we get past the sixty two days and that usually we ask folks to, hey, you know, can you give us the extra day or two or whatever, so we're not past the sixty two?
So Scott, I think we can work with you on that. I mean,
Okay.
And we have multiple applications for for both the train and also the accessory struc-, you know, the 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 other accessory structures with the with the planning board. So those are those are spread out over the next couple of months. So yeah, whatever works for your board, I'm sure.
I just want to make sure, you know, if there's something that's time sensitive and you really need to have this resolution by the next meeting, we'll do what we can do. But if it's not, then we can take our time and get out there and see and and what have you. Okay.
Absolutely, Scott, because we also, we still, we still need planning board approval.
Right. And I think, again, the only other thing I'd ask is that in the event, and I haven't counted the days. Sometimes we run into this, that just because of the calendar, April, whatever it is is sixty four days out instead of sixty two. Do you have any quarrel extending the couple of days?
Not at all. And if you want, you know, I can supply something in writing if you need.
Your your word is your bond and that's fine.
Great, thank you, Scott.
Been doing this a while.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, I look forward to going out there. It's always a neat property to look at and it's been a couple of years, so. Hopefully, Jim, you're going to take care of coordinating that, I hope.
Yeah, Mark, you and I can work on coordinating. I think we're going to try and get the entire ZBA out there. And if we can coordinate it with the planning board, so you guys can all be there at once and we can try and wrap a couple of these up, we will. If it doesn't make sense, we won't. We need to get this done, obviously. So I'll catch up with you and the ZBA members and we'll work on scheduling it.
Just so you know, Jim, just so you know, Jim, Saturday is probably the better day for me, Saturday or Sunday during the week doesn't work.
Okay.
And not that I'm going to beat a dead horse, but like I have a real job, trying to be like a trial lawyer kind of thing.
I do too.
So, you know, the weekend works better for me, too.
But we'll certainly accommodate that.
All right, great. I look forward to it. It'll be fun. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. It was a great application and I look forward to seeing it out there. So have a good evening.
Good night.
Right. And the last thing we have is resolution, I believe. All right. And the last thing, did everybody get a copy? And I apologize, I just have been running. And I I just was able to get the resolution done and then I had Kim go over it and make some edits. And and so this is the final version, but I did the resolution for the Maitland matter. And it's just to refresh your recollection, it's a proposal for a in-ground pool. Basically on River Road at the corner of River Road and Upper Hook Road, there's the house and it's in the back there. So anyway, here goes. The resolution of the town of Rhinebeck zoning board of appeals in the matter of the area variance application of Wendy Matlin, ZBA case number, oh, thanks. Ten twenty three. The background, the applicant is Wendy Matlin, who is the owner of the property, but she was represented by the the Neve group. And Chris Schmidt in in particular. The property involved, this appeal involves property located at six thirty six River Road, Rhinebeck, New York. It bears a tax parcel number which is set forth. The applicant's property is approximately two point two acres and is in the RA ten zoning district. The description of the proposed project, the applicant wishes to install an eighteen by thirty six foot concrete in-ground pool. And also wishes to install the required fencing to be code compliant. This is depicted in the submitted site plan and the pool is a setback. There's a is setback is twenty three feet, eleven inches. The zoning law requires a minimum side yard setback of seventy five feet for accessory structures in the RA ten zoning district pursuant to one twenty five twenty seven eight two five. And accordingly, the applicant requires one side yard setback variance. And that's what this is. Variance one, a side yard setback of seventy five feet is required, twenty three feet, eleven inches is proposed. And the variance requested is fifty four feet, one inch. The pool is proposed to be situated behind an existing garage and patio and behind an existing house. It is in front of an existing septic field. It is east of a rock outcropping, which is actually fairly substantial on the west side of the property facing a river road. After site inspection, it is clear that the proposed placement of the pool is the only area the pool can be placed on the property. ZBA review timeliness timeliness of the appeal. The applicant filed an appeal with this board on November twenty ninth of twenty twenty one and has paid the requisite fee. The appeal was filed within sixty days of the date of the CEO's determination letter, which was October twelfth. Thus, the application is timely as required pursuant to one twenty five dash one twenty five B of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. The application was accepted by this board on December fifteenth and deemed complete. The secret determination, the application was determined to be a type two action pursuant to six seventeen five C sixteen. And accordingly, no further environmental review is required. Referrals and responses, the application was referred to the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board following the Z ZBA's acceptance of the application as complete. The town of Rhinebeck Planning Board responded on January fourth, stating that they saw no significant planning or environmental concerns. The application was also referred to the WAC as a property is located in the LW RA, the WAC have have not provided a response. In addition, the application was referred to the HAPAC says the property is in the historic, the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District. They have also not responded, provided a response. Although no response was received by either these agencies, they were provided the thirty days which are required. And having not received a response after thirty days, the ZBA is able to issue its determination without the need of those responses. Public hearing, public hearing on this application was advertised and held on January nineteenth of twenty twenty two. Because of the COVID nineteen pandemic, the public hearing was held virtually pursuant to New York's state legislation as fifty thousand one slash A forty thousand one, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene meetings during the current pandemic via video conferencing and or telephone conferencing. The public was thus afforded the opportunity to view and participate during the public hearing remotely. There were no comments received from the public on this application. That was my recollection. If somebody has another, but I don't, I didn't recall anybody.
No.
Saying anything.
No.
Accordingly, the public hearing was closed on January nineteenth, twenty twenty two. Site visit on February fourteenth, and if anybody else went out there, let me know. But on February fourteen, Scott Bergen visited the applicant's property and surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand onsite conditions, property characteristics, setting, surrounding environment and the character of the neighborhood. Pursuant to the board's prior request, the applicant had staked the outline of the pool as well as the pool fence. After a site inspection, it was readily apparent that the only reasonable location for the pool and fence was where the applicant proposed on a site plan. The pool is behind an existing garage and an existing residence. These existing structures provide a visual buffer for and from neighbors. Also, there is a rock outcropping on the west side of the property, which prevents the pool and fencing from being seen from River Road. Finally, there was vegetation along the eastern border. I lost my, it's a whole long second. I had a delivery of hot chocolate, so I got this distracted. Anyway. Oh, finally, there was vegetation along the eastern border of the applicant's property and property of the adjacent homeowner. The adjacent homeowner, the adjacent property owner has structures that are quite a distance from the property line between the two parcels. In fact, actually, it's actually on the other side of the as as far as it can be from where the applicant's property is. Given the distance of the two structures of the adjoining property owner as well as the vegetation running along the property line between the two properties, it was apparent that any visual issues would be mitigated by the existing conditions. Based upon these factors, as well as the location of the existing septic field. That was another thing that played in here. It is apparent that the only reasonable site for the proposed pool is where the applicant proposes the pool to be placed pursuant to the site plan. Findings of fact and conclusions of law. A balancing test. In our review of the variance sought, we have considered the benefit to the applicant if the area variance is granted as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or the community by such grant. We have determined that the variance requested should be granted because there is no perceived detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by the granting of the variance. Ten, consideration of the five factors and balancing test. In our determination, we have considered the five factors required by section one twenty five dash one twenty four C one of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law as follows, A. If the variance is granted, will it cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We find that the answer to the question is no. As previously indicated, the pool and the fencing will be shielded from the neighbors and the public by an existing garage, residence and rock outcropping. While the pool and fencing may be able to be seen to some degree by a neighbor to the east of the property. Given the existing vegetation, as well as the distance between the pool and the neighbor's residence, it does does not appear that the pool and fencing will adversely affect the adjoining a property owner. Again, given the topography of the lot, the location of the existing buildings and septic field, the location proposed is the only reasonable location for the pool. Based upon the rendering supplied by the applicant, we believe that the neighborhood will be enhanced by the addition of the pool. B, and for some reason, B should be pushed closer to the 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 body of this thing, but that that's not a big deal. Anyway, can the benefits offered by the applicant be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance? We find that the answer to the question is no, as previously indicated, the only reasonable location for the pool is the location proposed by the applicant. Given the existing structures and topography. Is the requested area variance substantial? And and I I I kind of went back and forth on this section. I ultimately said yes, but it was a close call. Anyway, we find the answer to this question is yes. However, this is a close call. While numerically, the variant, the variance is substantial in that seventy five feet setback is required and the variance requested is fifty one feet, one inch. There is no other place to put the pool. Also, the surrounding area mitigates the potential impacts of the variance to the surrounding area and neighbors. The property itself comprises two point two acres and the adjoining property owner's residence is some distance from the shared property line. Given the location of the adjoining property owner's residence, as well as the existing vegetation, there should be limited visual impact on the adjoining property owner. In fact, from the overhead views supplied by the applicant, it appears that there is a row of trees between the two properties, which would provide additional visual shielding of the pool from the adjoining property owner. This would be particularly true in the summer, but also was apparent on the site visit. D, will the proposed variance have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? We find the answer to this question is no. Given the topography of the area, the pool will have a limited impact on the surrounding properties. In addition, the rendering shows a very appealing pool and fence, which will improve the appearance of the applicant's property. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes. However, as noted on multiple occasions, the applicant can only place the pool where proposed, thus the difficulty is only self-created because the applicant wishes to construct a pool. There's no other reasonable area on the property to do so than what is currently proposed. Eleven, minimal variance requested. In addition to our review of the five factors and balancing tests, we must also determine if this requested variance is the minimum variance necessary inadequate to accomplish what is being requested by the applicant. We find that the answer to this question is yes. Again, for the umpteenth time, the placement of the pool, as stated on multiple occasions, is the only reasonable place that the pool can be placed, given the existing structures and topography. Now therefore be resolved based on all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows, section one. The ZBA hereby grants the variance requested, allowing a side yard setback of twenty three feet, eleven inches from the required seventy five feet. The variances from zoning law section one twenty five dash twenty seven A two B. The ZBA finds that the granting of this variance to the applicant outweighs any detrimental, any detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. It is the board's finding that the pool is proposed. It is proposed to be, excuse me, in the only reasonable location on the property. It will be situated behind an existing garage and patio and behind an existing house. It is in front of an existing septic field. It is east of a rock outcropping on the west side of the property, facing the river, facing River Road. These features will mitigate any potential impact for the surrounding area and neighbors. Section two, the granting of the variance is expressly contingent upon the construction being in conformity with the plans presented to the board. Section three, the granting of the variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town of Rhinebeck for any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application. And in full compliance with Article fourteen, fee reimbursement to the And in full compliance with Article fourteen, fee reimbursement to the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. The grant shall not be deemed valid until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Section four, the granting of the variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and or approvals. And five, the area variance must, shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of the resolution. So. If we have comment now, any questions, concerns, comments?
I have one thing.
Okay.
I think in the very beginning. You mentioned that the variance. Requested was fifty-four feet one inch, when I think it's actually fifty-one feet one inch.
My math could be off.
Jim, you can verify that, right?
Got a calculator, that's why I'm a lawyer.
Is, yeah, it is on my, that's what I have on the sheet, I'm just checking with the calculator myself.
Yeah, I think so, I I think it comes out, yeah. I I think that's the only change I would make in.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Good catch.
Yep.
So you're paying attention and you're awake?
I, I, yeah, I don't know how I did that, but.
That that, well, well, that's very commendable.
Thank you very much.
Get a gold star. Any other? Comments, concerns? To me, this was an easy one, I went out there and and I was with Chris and it it just. It's apparent that this is the only place you can put it, and it's. And the and the way the property is and the structures and everything else, it fits really nicely, and it's. You can't see it from River Road, you can't see it from Upper Hook Road, and I doubt you can see it even from the neighbor. Because there is that row of trees and it's it's just. There's no other, and then you got the septic, you know, there there's just no other place to put it, and I think it looks, I, if if it. Hopefully, it looks just like the renderings, it's going to be a nice improvement to what's there now, which is really not not much. I think it'll be a good addition to the neighborhood, so. Any comments, concerns or questions of me or the resolution? All right, then, at this time, I will make a motion that we accept the resolution. As read, subject to the math correction that Richard pointed out. Do I have a second? Okay, that's Tim Allenbrook, Gretchen, can you do the honors?
Right, Tim A.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Tim E.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
All right, it's approved, the variance is granted. And Chris, thanks for coming out on Monday.
Yeah, absolutely, it was great to meet you in person, and I appreciate the board's time and efforts on this, and. Look forward to coming back to you with other projects in the future.
Yeah, we look forward to seeing you too on another project, great, all right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, have a good night.
Good night, too.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see that we have anything else on for this evening, unless I'm missing something.
Just just totally unrelated. Have you guys seen this?
What is it?
Yeah, it was mailed out to everybody in Rhinebeck, I don't know.
Was it so? Never, I have never seen it, what is it?
It says, here are the facts about Rockledge, Rhinebeck.
Rockledge.
Yeah, that one has my name on it, if it ever comes back.
Yeah, that's kind of. It's it's kind of been lost, it was, it's it's. It's unfortunate, because I know we actually did the site visit on that, you know, a million years ago.
It's called Rock Edge?
The project is ongoing.
It is ongoing, okay.
It's 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 still, it's still an active project, Accra Hook Road.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about.
Oh, it's it's a luxury, I guess, what is it, luxury condo, is a record.
An old daytop property.
The old day, yeah, the old daytop.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And there's magnificent buildings, beautiful buildings.
Yes, beautiful back there.
It it really is. But no, I hadn't seen that, I I was wondering, actually, my wife was actually asking me about that the other day, because she came out on the site visit. Anyway. All right, any other? Anything else anybody needs to bring up?
No.
All right, well, have a great month. And hopefully, Jim, if you can, just coordinate with us, and maybe we can get out to that. You know, T Court and 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 check that out.
I'm going to talk to Mark tomorrow, I'll catch up with them and we'll start scheduling right away.
Yeah, that'd be great if we could get that done in the next couple of weeks, maybe, and then. Then Tim can start, you know, writing the resolution, maybe have it ready. If possible. All right, everybody, well, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a second. That was awful quick.
But sorry.
A third.
Just wanted to get it in there.
All right, have a good night, everybody, and thanks for your time, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Bye bye.